Who's with you?
Oh, my God.
Okay, just a quick glance.
As soon as you see it all.
I recognize you, but you don't recognize... I guess it was your mother in the passenger seat?
Well, seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting towards here and there. Any, thank you, everybody, for coming in. Physical distancing again. Hopefully, one of these days, we'll be able to get back to normal. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agenda is presented? Paul? Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. That's Kerry Gennasli. Okay, moving on to the adoption of the previous minutes. Any questions on minutes of June the 8th? If not, somebody wish to move the minutes as... Okay, Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Kerry Gennasli. Okay, I heard the ding, so I assume we have Kelly on the line. Let's see how lucky we are.
Kelly, are you there?
Hi, I am here. Can you hear me?
We can. Can you see us and hear us?
I can, I can see you, yeah. For most of you, you can see me, but it's nice to see you all.
We don't have video feed, just the audio, so...
Can you click? I'm there.
Well, that might be for the best. It's, uh, it's deep in here, so I'm more casual than usual.
Okay.
That's fine. Well, the floor is yours, Kelly, if you want to...
Perfect, so I'll, I'll jump right into things. I, you know, for some of these presentations, I provide PowerPoint presentation, but because we've kind of been getting a different presentation to municipalities and to counties over the past couple of months, I'm just gonna go, gonna go over at the top of the point. So I'm just giving you one moment here. Just moving on to screen. Okay, so I'll jump right into it. And we can save questions until the end, if that works for everybody. And as always, I'm more than happy to follow up if there's questions I can answer. So for those of you who aren't familiar, CAP is the largest industry association in Canada. We have offices close to Coop, which may represent about eighty percent of the natural gas and oil produced in Canada, or our membership produces it. But, uh, so the vast majority, and that fluctuates depending on where our membership sits at and what's happening in the country. So typically, in these presentations, we give a state of the industry update. Um, you know, CAP's priorities have greatly shifted over the past few months because of COVID. So this update is really to provide you with what CAP's been working on over the past few months and where we're headed for the rest of the year. So as you're well aware, as a result of the COVID-19 health crisis and measures taken by governments around the world to curb transmission of the virus, world demand for oil was estimated to drop by approximately thirty to thirty million barrels per day from three crisis levels, which read about a hundred million barrels per day. So a pretty significant drop. We have started to see demand rebound, which has been reflected in the market prices. So today, I think, you know, the Western Texas midyear media was trading at about thirty-five, and we have been looking at thirty, more or less, over the past couple of weeks. And then also combined with Saudi Russian price war, where countries have continued to access the market, which is an issue we're still struggling with, has led to significant economic crises for the oil and gas industry. And so I did want to touch on this storage issue because we are kind of going through as opposed to this, even as we move forward. But because of the Saudi Russian price war, our market was just flooded. So at the end, well, in the middle of April, I should say, there was an OPEC++ meeting that actually had the Minister of Energy from Alberta attend, which, you know, the intention of the meeting was to figure out the storage crisis because everything was more or less full, and that's what was really bringing prices down. You know, a few weeks later, we did see a little bit of movement, but not nearly as much as we thought was going to be reflected from that meeting. And so the price has been, has been incremental in terms of uptick, but it's also been quite slow. So when gas was around, you know, fifty, sixty cents a gallon, that was a result of the storage issue. And then all at once, we had some additional storage from the market internationally speaking. And then at the same time, we did start to see markets open up worldwide. We see people start moving again, and goods and services being moved, which has helped. So all that being said, pre-crisis, CAP was predicting capital expenditures for the sector in Canada to be about thirty-nine billion in 2020. Since then, however, there have been combined public announced cuts to capital spending by companies in the neighborhood of about seventy-five billion. And these announced cuts are unlikely to reflect the total capital cuts for the sector. So it, you know, it is, uh, it's looking pretty grim out there. Not to sugarcoat it, but one thing I would add is that because of the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen downturn, excuse me, Canadian companies are in much better shape than American companies in terms of global oil and gas sector. And I think this is really important because we may not see the holding and the going under as they've also supported, which may in turn give us an advantage down the road. So we were already extremely difficult, which was, you know, silver lining of the previous crisis. And so that's, you know, we're kind of moving forward with that in mind. So also, I should mention that natural gas prices have largely held. Actually, levels of the subsector have related dependent on liquids production, which is likely to hit the price and demand for oil. So that's been an interesting situation. But in terms of natural gases, these actually continue to do decently well. So moving on, just in terms of what CAP has been looking at over the past few months, there's really been three main areas. The biggest that I'll touch on is liquidity and the need for liquidity. So, you know, I'd like to set the context of there's a lot of projects that have been greenlit and ready to go, and at this point, we just need a cash infusion to ensure that these companies can move projects forward. The federal government has made substantial efforts to open liquidity across the economy. You know, we were pushing for oil and gas announcements very early on in March, which is what we were expecting, but the announcement was actually a bit later. You know, in terms of other announcements that affect the industry but aren't necessarily considered to be top... I, there happened, and most recently, there's been two announcements. There were three weeks. There was the large employer relief funding, also known as relief funding. It's actually, the formal name, I should say, is larger than four in a year or emergency finance, which is available to corporations across economic sectors, including the airline and manufacturing, as well as oil and gas, who kind of been to be biggest in Canada. But this was the last of the big announcements in terms of how these were with big thresholds. So the business targeted for companies with three hundred million plus threshold. And about thirty of our member companies meet their requirements and thresholds of this liquidity benefit. So I should mention that, you know, as these programs and relief programs become available, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're utilizing this additional funding. It's just important that it's there in case we need to greenlight programs for projects and, you know, have that security for these larger employers. So we haven't seen any of our member companies take advantage of this relief program, but as I said, it's very important that it's there. We've also seen some additional relief come for small and medium-sized companies, which is the vast majority of our membership. And, you know, these smaller companies, it's very important for them to maintain their employees because they're lean as is. So that was very good news for additional funding nineteen and a half weeks ago. In addition to that, in terms of liquidity, the big first announcement that came in was one point seven billion to protect about ten thousand jobs across the country. About fifty-two hundred are estimated to be in Alberta for reclaiming and revitalizing porticoes and abandoned wells in the province, but also in Western Canada. So this is a very big announcement, and it's one of the only areas right now where true stimulus can occur. So this was really intended to protect some of the service and trade workers in the province. So in addition to that, the two other priorities that we've been looking at are do no harm and the oil and gas industry as an essential service. So for do no harm, you know, this was really focusing on continuing to avoid development and differentiation of policies that could add complexity or cost during this time and how these really don't have the capacity to absorb those changes. And in this area, you know, methane equivalency between the federal government and the provinces were a very big one. And when we look at cost and, you know, using methane as an example, our sector is very much committed to a forty-five percent reduction of methane emissions by 2025. The digital regulation and spending in this space for our company is that for our sector, you know, prohibits important innovation spending that would get us there. So that we do that, we're actually sort of in traction in that space. And then, as I mentioned, the oil and gas industry as an essential service. So this continues to be a priority for us for COVID-19. But as we kind of got going into this crisis, it was very much a lot of upfront work. So, you know, protecting essential workers from getting sick and making sure that they could operate and, you know, produce products to keep the economy going. And one thing I really like to point out is that in terms of energy security and some of the pipeline issues for the country, we need to ensure that, you know, we were getting gas to the gas stations, you know, to, to keep emergency vehicles working and also to heat and keep our hospitals going. So it's something that, you know, we sometimes make for granted in terms of the direct link to service and, uh, on the industry. So with that, I think I'm just gonna move on to quick update on, you know, some positives. If that, I would say, is really looking at the pipeline projects currently right now. So the four major projects, as difficult as they were to get some of them off the ground. So Keystone XL, TC Coastal Gas Line, Everglade Three, and Transmountain are actually all in construction or nearing the end of construction in the case of Everglade Three right now. So in many ways, this is, uh, you know, I don't want to say a silver lining of COVID-19, but an interesting time capsule, I guess, of when these projects were all in construction at the same time, and they continue to be a very good employer for people during this time, given that it's construction jobs. So, you know, all of these projects are in good shape right now. The one that I would say kind of has a question mark around it is Keystone XL has given the upcoming US election, but for the time being, it's mostly my head and TC Energy maintains that the project will be fully built. And with that, I think I will, I'll pass over her questions. I've done a lot of talking and leave it there.
Okay, any questions for Kelly? So as CAP, did they come out with a drilling count for this year? Kelly? Hello? Did we lose her?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself there.
There.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
CAP did put a drilling forecast out. To be put out the drilling forecast in T1 of every year. It looks drastically different now. So one of the pieces of work that we're working on throughout the summer is to give an economic forecast and read forward, especially as we transition into priorities that, you know, are in the lens of economic recovery. So I am hoping actually to send those numbers in kind of our economic recovery priorities out to municipalities and counties and, you know, communities with that information. So happy to do that as we file it.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions? When you were saying on the natural gas side, you didn't give a gigajoule price that you're kind of estimating. I know with the oil and gas, you kind of gave thirty to thirty-five dollars a barrel, but on natural gas, do you have a kind of estimate for this year or...?
So I, I didn't look at the natural gas price today, but I will say that it's kind of fifty-three, five dollars over the past few months, and we haven't really seen a drop below that. But just to put into perspective how, how good that price actually is, is that in the spring of 2018, we saw the price of natural gas in Canada dip below zero. So the only way that, you know, utility companies were making up cost was through the, through administration fees. So to be trading at, you know, between three and five dollars is actually quite high for Canadian natural gas. And we've seen, you know, very strong production in Southern Alberta for dry gas. So it's very cheap to produce. So we've seen some uptick in, you know, the more conventional base of natural gas development, but hopefully that answers your question. But I would say between three and five dollars, if it wasn't for next year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kelly? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to call in and, and give us a bit of update from CAP. And, and we appreciate the, the work that you guys do for the oil and gas industry, which has been so important to our municipalities, especially in the rural areas. But anyway, thank you very much.
Perfect. Well, thanks so much for having me, and I'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Okay, moving on to the correspondence. Speaking of gas tax, I guess, we've got the letter back from federal government, or roughly from the provincial government, KC, and from the, about the federal gas tax. So for everybody that doesn't know, the federal government gives us the money, but they give it through the province, and the province hands it out, so.
The big one of note for this year is it's back to the hundred thousand. If you have those either remember, last year, they doubled it for the one year. So it's back to the numbers that we're used to seeing.
Hundred nine six fifty-six, so... Okay, any questions on...
Two eighteen would have been nicer.
Yes, that would have been nice. Any questions on that nice letter? It's what we kind of budgeted for, I assume.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, moving on to five-two, the grad celebration, thank you, thanking that.
This, this came to myself, but of course, this is a thank you to everybody that helped out with everything that they did. And they, and yeah, we did send one to Stu as well, so.
That was nice. I mean, that's, I mean, I think there's a lot of truth of what she says there, the town did get behind and back and support the grads as much as we could. And I think that, that you can see a lot of requests coming for different years and different ideas and, and... Any questions on the...
Just a comment. When you look at the number of grads versus the number of vehicles that were in that way, it all equates.
It wasn't just parents?
Yeah, no, that's for sure. No, it was, it was good, so. Okay, then moving on to the next one, which came late to Kim.
So I received this Sunday, and just because of that date and this being our three-week window, I didn't want this to come in July to you guys when it's dated for June first, so. And Tom had briefly given an update on this as well, so.
The part of the delay was is that the executive wanted to peruse what was being said prior to sending it out, even though the board needed approval to send it. So we have a couple stickers, the stickers on our committee that will mean that there's, there is a process with, I believe, the board trumps the executive. But I have only one. Anyway, any questions on any of those three? If not, somebody wish to... Okay, George Lee, who's doing final correspondence, thank you. Any questions on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that's Kerry Gennasli. Okay, moving on to the financial statement.
Bylaw.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Animal by, please.
Sorry.
No, I jumped it. I jumped it. Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. I'm usually the one that jumps all over, not Kim, but anyway.
What's Kelly doing with this? I've already opened them for Lorna, so.
Cash statement ending May 31st.
So how will not, postponing till August 31st, how is that gonna impact the... And will it be an impact at all?
Yes, yeah, well, mostly because the majority of our cash comes in by...
So it's just a cash flow thing?
It's just a cash flow thing. And like I mentioned when we, when we reviewed, because we have almost a third on the tips program, we're getting that monthly to cash flow that we didn't have before. So the, the delay of the ninety days for the, for the due date of taxes shouldn't be that big of an impact. We're gonna feel it for sure, but we won't have a full bank account in July. It'll be September, so. The biggest point of note on this one is you can see the million and three that was removed from the MSI to, into our bank accounts so that we can continue paying for the pool project. That's the biggest movement inside the cash table.
Okay, any questions on...
I move this for information, or we see this for information.
Okay, Lorna moves on. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Kerry Gennasli. Okay, moving on to the year-to-date statement to the end of May 31st. Any questions on any of those?
Well, I was just gonna ask him if there's anything that stands up. I didn't notice anything.
No, they really, not anything out of the ordinary. West Council had any specific questions about specific line items in there.
All right.
I'll move, we see this for information.
Okay, so I'll move it. Any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Again, it's Kerry Gennasli. And moving on to bylaw, animal amendment.
So as you are all aware from the useful accountability review, these were identified. There was three left that we need to deal with. One's the animal bylaw, one's the bylaw, unfortunate bylaw, and the other one is the procedural bylaw. The animal, of course, was the, to remove the schedules that can be done through a single resolution of council. And so this one, we just did as a simple amendment to it. So we kept the same bylaw number with an A20 on it so that, you know, the year, so that you can reference when it was changed. And because it's a bylaw, as we went through, bylaws need to be changed via bylaw. So this is a, we just crafted an amending bylaw to put that together. So I added the old bylaw to it, and then the context of where it changed. And the context for where it changed were, we updated the land use bylaw number so that it's up to date, and then put the bylaws, or the Schedule A for the current rates and fees bylaw, and replace, sorry, Schedule B, and then Schedule A, so that it reflects the current rates and fees bylaw. And then a motion, part of the lines is to remove Schedule A and B from, from the existing bylaw.
Okay, so we can do that all in...
And you can do all three readings for that if you are so inclined.
Okay.
I, I just have a, not necessarily with the, the motion, but when I was reading through the, through the bylaw, there's part, narrative states you can't have any more than four animals.
Yeah.
But then you can have up to, I just, but then a part that says you can have up to ten birds and...
Pigeons.
Okay. Some, oh, no, pigeons are excluded because they're, they aren't considered. So at least the way I understood, I would...
Yeah, ornamental, ornamental birds were allowed, ten. And the, uh, the no person shall own possession or harbor more than a combination of four animals, dogs and cats, is the one specific in that over the age of four months on a parcel of land within municipality. So ornamental birds were identified as they're basically their own. And that's why they got that number of ten.
That's same for rodents as well, you can have that many.
Yeah.
Many gophers as you like.
What's that?
Many gophers as you like. And maybe you didn't invite them to your yard, but they might be living there.
And rabbits and rodents are ten as well, and that's their specific in each one of those. So the, the four, the four specific cats and dogs.
Or, six-one poultry. No person shall keep any poultry on any parcel of land in the municipality.
Saw some Facebook posts, yeah.
So should we be worrying about this at this point?
It will come, and we actually had a conversation before it all got started about the process that is engaging, you know, getting people to talk about it so that they can bring a proposal to actually, to council for a discussion, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if we should just leave this down if something was coming or not.
It's not coming right away from somewhere, so it's really, yeah.
If it could be, yeah, I just didn't know if we should do it now and then have to change it all with...
There will be, no, if, if we do it, it'll have to be an amendment. And really, we're at, we're at no point to be putting anything together at this point. Nancy's been doing some preliminary, looking into what other municipalities have. And it's, it's gonna end up with its own, its whole own section when it comes, because there's provincial regulations out there as well.
I know, in Phoenix, chickens next door and roosters at four o'clock in the morning all the time.
I thought that a lot of them won't allow roosters.
I think they can be the...
You can have backyard hen program, but I thought that roosters were not allowed in the...
The majority.
The majority of, yeah.
But maybe...
And I suspect this one probably wasn't supposed to be there.
Oh.
I know when I lived in Calgary, you were allowed twelve chickens and one rooster.
Yeah, and again, I think it's mainly because of the, the potential noise that a rooster makes over chickens, so.
They start pretty good.
And there's from a little bit that I've heard so far, there's from the provincial side, like things on making sure that the animals are properly taken care of solely in our area. That means heated water in the meantime, heated shelter, those sort of things that a lot of people don't consider. So that's why we're, yeah, we're gonna be looking into the provincial regulations as well for them because in some cases, they're permitted through the, through the province. We need a lot more time to put something together, something good. When I got contacted about it, I basically gave the process to get the thing started and that, you know, if there's a whole bunch of interest, then let's work on putting something together that, that's good. And if there isn't a whole bunch of interest, then it runs its course, so. It sounds like there's been some pretty good feedback on social media, so we'll see what, see what comes from it.
Okay, so somebody want to give it first reading? Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion for first reading? Okay, hearing none, call a question. That's Kerry Gennasli, second. Okay, George D., thank you. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And that's Kerry Gennasli, introducing the third, Paul. Any question on Paul's motion to introduce the third reading? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that is carried out state. Okay, good reading. Okay, Laura. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And I think I might click online and bump up a minute. As you guys, come on.
Everybody move it, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm.
I, I can choose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the animal bylaw amendment is carried. Moving on to seven two.
So this is the bylaw enforcement officer bylaw. And it was very, very similarly worded to the CAO one for appointing by bylaw. Just basically where the comma was in there. Counsel is always appointed through resolution, so we need to amend bylaw to say that bylaw enforcement officer is appointed by resolution. And then the other portion of it was part of Schedule B had the, needed the requirement to have a, an appeal process. It had the disciplinary process in there, but it didn't have the appeal process. Funny part about that is you have a policy for the community peace officer and it has the appeal process in there. So I basically just took the community peace officer portion and put it into the appeal process for, for our bylaw enforcement. So it would follow the same schedule. The peace officer, any appeal would go to the solicitor general's office where an appeal from a bylaw standpoint comes to council. So I deal with it and tell an appeal and then counsel from there. So the requirement from the document, the municipal accountability review has the recommended action, which is those two. I included the original bylaw with the schedules. We will just be replacing Schedule B with bylaw 12, they're sorry, 14. 1403 dash eight 20. And you can see where I've added the appeal process here. So the new bylaw amendment. 1403 dash eight 20. As section two of the bylaw enforcement bylaw be amended by deleting the words by bylaw and replacing with by resolution. And Schedule B of the bylaw enforcement officer bylaw be amended by replacing with Schedule B as attached to this bylaw. Again, this is the same thing. You can do all three readings if you like. That one brings it into compliance with. Here in legislation.
Any questions on this, those changes in the bylaw? Okay, Laura moves first. Any question on Laura's motion?
Lorna.
Yeah, Laura. Any question on Laura's motion? If not, we'll call a question. That's carried out state and.
Second.
George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And it's carried out state. Okay, introduction of third. Okay, Laura again. Okay, Laura's motion. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried out state again and we'll move on to third reading. Lyle, thank you. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried out state again. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the current business of the campground.
So those of you that have been following news know that the restrictions have been lifted on campgrounds and as long as you can meet the physical distancing guidelines and the, and the maintenance. So Stu and Bonnie got together, discussed our campgrounds and how we can operate within, within the guidelines. So they would like a formal motion, just like we did with the tourist center at the playgrounds, just like a motion, formal motion from council that basically says that we can open July 1st and as long as we can adhere to the guidelines. So basically, if we, if we find that, you know, over a lot of people and, you know, we can't meet the guidelines, that we can close it again. Like the motion from council is there to allow us to, to do that with your blessing.
Any questions?
I was speaking to some people who were out at Lebo Park this weekend. And they were gonna go and spend a day because they're moving here. And they said it was just a lot of all people. So if that happens with the town, we're filled up and people are not doing, not behaving themselves, is that what we call, are, who, whom enforces that?
We, so a complaint would go into the public health inspector, which would then dispatch the appropriate agency. And in our case, without a peace officer, it would be the RCP.
So it goes to AHS?
Yes, all complaints about physical distancing go to AHS.
Okay, so they don't come to the town?
They, they would fall in complaint. We would refer them to the public health. There's a, if you go to the COVID-19 website for the Alberta government, it has links right to where you can complain to, to your local public health inspector.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? If not, somebody wish to move that Paul would move that we open the campgrounds back to their original, following the past, following the recommendations of Albert Health? Any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried out state. Okay, okay, moving on to the procedure bylaw.
The reason why I put this in a report the way I did is obviously it's very self-explanatory. There's quite a few things that have changed, so I added the current procedural bylaw. When I was doing my research to do the amendments to bring it in line with the municipal accountability review, I looked at it and there's several things when I started reading others that are addressing some of the changes we made. The voting is an example, the live streaming of the meetings. All of these should be addressed in the procedural bylaw, so. But one of the clauses in the procedural bylaw also says that it needs to come to a meeting for a recommendation to make any changes. So I would like your blessing to rewrite the procedural bylaw. Many of the components will stay the same, but yeah, it'll be a complete rework of that bylaw just to make it more up to date. All of you had a chance to read it. When you get into passing motions and that, it's pretty jumbled up. I did, I have read quite a few others that reference the Robert's Rules and Orders and then just clearly defined some of the lines in there to actually make it a little bit easier to read. And based on the information that's in there, my hope is that by rewriting this bylaw for any new counselors and that, this will become a reference point, so, you know, one of, another one of those documents that you get after you're elected that really clearly spells out the, the procedures of what you do in a meeting, how to bring things forward, those sort of things. So I think if I'm allowed to spend a little bit of time, you know, it does delay when we'll get, get the last of that municipal accountability review taken care of. But I think that it's worth the time to invest in, in rewriting in council is in support of that.
Okay, any thoughts or?
Your bylaw, how you do think so.
When we're, when we're going through all these changes, like when you have to review, like, is there, is there a timeframe for us to get all this done?
Yeah, so the, the municipal accountability review came out on the May 22nd. They gave us six, sorry, eight weeks to answer when we would do something about the things that they identified. And then they give you a year from then to, to address them. We're gonna have everything completed, especially if I can get this procedural bylaw done, which you were in the other day and noticed that it had already ripped apart. So if we have this together for our next meeting or end of July, it will still be before our six, or sorry, our eight week deadline, so.
And then do we have to, we submit that to show that?
We did our. Yeah, so the, the advisor for municipal affairs that I was working with that did the review, we just have to, and that's that action list that I gave you at the last meeting. I submit that with timelines of when everything was complete. And then they just file it. We wait for four, five more years until we decide to do it again. So, well, realistically, we should have everything completed in the next meeting or so.
Yeah, in there too, I imagine you do that clerical one on the in camera, which gets changed to.
To closed meeting, yes. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of that in there.
I shouldn't say, yeah, it's a clerical, it's a, just in there.
Terminology that is used.
So does the MGA call it closed session or in camera?
They call it a closed meeting.
Closed meeting, sorry.
And it, it's kind of interesting because I've, I've reviewed quite a few procedural bylaws from other communities that continue to use the word in camera and they use it in definitions that they just take that it's a closed meeting as per the MGA. So some communities continue to use in camera. But the suggestion from Jeff when we did our review was, you know, being consistent with the MGA using the same wording eliminates confusion.
Yeah, I was talking to one of the previous CEOs and just it seems to be an interpretation of the the wording of, of what needs to be done and stuff.
Had a good conversation today with him about that.
So I'm, I'm sure it's, you know, the same thing and all that. You know, the next go around, they'll find some other areas of.
They'll change something else.
Interpretation of the rules, but.
And it was not, it was not one of the recommend, it was not in writing that we needed to change that. That was just one of those verbal things through the conversation. I noticed that this is in here and this is your opportunity to change it to be more consistent with the MGA. So they, they're not gonna come down and slap our wrists if you decide to continue using the word in camera. But having said that, we've already changed your templates based on the nods that I got at the last meeting, so. But yeah, if you do want to keep using in camera, it's not like we'll get in trouble for it.
I, I think it's like everything, once you get used to the different terminology. I mean, it's whether they use Robert's Rules or executive summaries or whichever. I mean, they all have different terminology or they have some different terminology, so. Anything else or any other thoughts?
This is kind of a little bit off topic, but closed meeting, is that the same? Well, municipal government act spells it out for municipalities. If I was at some other sort of meeting, would the same rules apply?
Yes, and the, and you cover off on that by, especially for any committee that the, that you as council appoint. That's why this procedural bylaw is for this council and your committees. So say your MPC. You guys delegate that authority to the MPC through committee, so they have to follow your procedures.
But on the other hand, the library board as an example.
Has their own bylaws.
Has their own bylaws. But what we usually try and do is recommend that they follow the philosophy of the MGA.
Yeah, I was just thinking through that.
Even the Mark's foundation.
Yep.
And, and again, you know, it's up to them, but on the other hand, you know, if they follow the rules of the rest, you know, of, you know, the MGA, which is a huge organization or a huge document, then it, then allows everybody to kind of be on the same page. And same with, you know, some people even, you know, if under the Robert's Rules of Orders, there's a discussion that sometimes happens of what and where and how. Sometimes you get challenged on that too because there is a new Robert's Rules of Order that came out last year, I think it must have been the year before, which kind of changed a few things that happened in the past. We don't follow them to a T because it, it says in Robert's Rules of Order that before you discuss a, a motion, it had, the motion has to be put on the floor. So we usually discuss it and then if there is an alteration in it, we alter it before we vote on it. That's not the way Robert's Rules really sets, but we find that it usually works so much easier, but.
Because if you followed the, the true rules of order for this document being a request for decision, it would rent that council directs administration to draft a procedural bylaw and then you have the discussion of that.
But we usually just.
Administratively, it makes it easier.
Yeah, allow the administration to, to develop a motion. It's the other way around, but.
That way Lyle can read it out loud when he wants to.
So anyway, any.
Basically, all, you, you all had a chance to, to read the document. If you, if you're in agreement that it could use a rewrite, then I'll get started on that if somebody could give me that direction.
Okay, Lyle, moving on.
I'll make that motion that comes to the administration to draft a procedural bylaw to be presented for consideration at a future meeting of council.
Nicely done.
Thanks, Lyle. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. Again, it is carried. Okay, now Nancy's Q and P.
So just do a quick review. You, you all had a chance to read the. I'm sure you read, read all of it. And that's the nice part about iCompass. We can put so much stuff in there that we can keep your weekends entertained. No, Nancy put together a report for this. The safety codes has asked for the documents to be combined. So you guys remember that last year you did the Q and P for the fire. So this is amalgamating it. They've done some changes for the amount of inspections. I can let Nancy if, speak, speak to those if you'd like.
If you'd like, Nancy. Laura is yours.
It's a template from safety codes. And one thing that they clarified was their audit process. They kind of flip-flopped over the years on how they audit. This, every March I have to have my audit done. As far as inspections, they did increase the number of inspections. Before we had a, a bit of a say in how many inspections the maximum, but now they said this, these are the numbers you have to use. They increased some of their values of work threshold for the different inspections. Just reflecting the construction, increasing construction costs. Fire, basically the same organizational chart. That was something new that we put in, that we put in. And they've increased the length of time a permit can be opened from one year to two years.
Sometimes that happens.
Usually happens. Any questions?
Nancy was gonna provide you with the red line version and the new version, but we decided that rather than reading it twice, we'd let you read once and ask questions.
So any questions for Nancy on it?
So if someone has to postpone it, it's just a matter of reapplying?
Yes.
Do they reapply or do they just ask for an extension?
Can you give an extension? It's up to me to set up.
Okay, anything else or any other questions for Nancy? You made the effort to come over and visit with us tonight.
That's pretty easy.
Yeah, I, I have to admire anybody that can work with all this. Most of you guys.
It's my fourth one, so I'm not used to it.
And, and she just, and she always just emails it off and says, can you have, can you give this a quick look? Imagine ever a quick look at that document.
Okay, any questions? Somebody wish to move the.
This one has kind of a weird motion as well. I just thought I'd point it out. You do have to approve it, but then you have to add it to safety codes for their approval before Tom and I can sign it, so.
So I guess George Lee approves to send us off back to, I imagine just approves it now.
Yeah.
Okay, any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. Again, it's carried out state. Okay, thank you. Thank you Nancy for coming in and voice investment. You didn't even get that. I almost said something else, but. Okay, anyway, we'll move on to. That's right.
That's okay.
Oh, okay, sorry. Move on to community reports. There's one there from Orsk. Any question on that? Orsk meetings, Nance? Orsk meetings, Nancy? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the fire services on October 29th.
I guess my question is why October 29th?
We got, they just, just the order they came in. And I guess for a note for council, I think Karen and I have looked at inside the template for loading these documents. When we have multiples from agencies, like this month, we had multiple from the regional response for elder abuse and the fire committee, we're going to lump those together so you can just read them in order rather than, right now, they're just lumped in there as we got them.
Okay, so any questions on the first one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the place commission. Okay, no questions on that. We'll move on to the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse. Any questions on this one? Again, most of the stuff we've all heard from theoretically from that representative that sits on them, but again, if there's any questions. Okay, moving back on to the fire committee one again, which was the June 8th meeting. Okay, no questions on that. Move back on, like Kim said, to the elder abuse council again. Okay, no questions. Move on to municipal planning commission giraffe minutes. Oh, sorry, did you?
That's okay, I'll ask after.
Sorry.
I can ask after.
Oh, okay. MPC. No questions, golf course. Okay, no questions or any questions on any of those? If not, somebody wished to file the community reports? Okay, Lyle. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Nancy, carry it down. Okay, moving on to the verbal reports. Counselor Taylor.
Oh, you have minutes there for our meetings, I was at. Golf, MPC, fire.
Okay, any questions for Paul?
Is there anything that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Town didn't burn down.
Pardon?
The town didn't burn down.
Okay, and the golf course is still there?
The golf course director's making money, so far.
Okay, moving on to counselor devotee.
I had FCSS. We've hired a new manager, we're down there. We're going to go with a contract for this manager, and it'll give her a job description, what we're expecting for her to do. So that'll be different. It's going to be just a one-year contract to start with. So we've got it up to four days a week now, Monday to Thursday, we're going to be open. We, it was quite a lengthy meeting, actually. We did finally come to the conclusion of keeping it open all summer and staggering the staff in there, so it won't be closed down where everybody goes at once. So it'll be open all the way through the summer for the food bank and for FCSS. And we're just going to stagger staff like at lunch times and stuff like that where it was always closed before. So we have got the staggering of the staff, which we thought was really important to do in here, so we've got that all worked out. And we'll get to welcome our new manager probably at Carol's going away or retirement party, which is on July 7th at 2:00 in the afternoon, hopefully at the rodeo grounds, at the Lewis Rarivoni up there. So I guess it'll be like a come and go if you want to come or whatever, so. Yeah, that's all I got.
So you said it was July 7th?
Yep.
At 2:00?
At 2:00.
I'm sorry.
I did send Bonnie an email, Bonnie's out of the offices with Ray.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, I sent her an email asking her if it was available. When I had talked to her before about it, she said that all of July was open for the Lewis Rarivoni, so I didn't think July 7th would be a problem, so we booked it for you.
And we did get an email today that the new director will start a July version.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sounds great, appreciate that.
Can you say who it is?
Yes, well, I guess it's not going to be a secret. It's going to be Joan Peterson Nelson's wife?
Yeah.
Well, she already works in there, so she's familiar with how the working goes. The staff seems to get along well with her. She has no problem stepping up. The days that Carol was off, she would step up into that position and do what needed to be done, so we just figured she would be the obvious choice.
That's good. Okay, any other questions for Georgia Lee? Hearing none, thank you. Moving on to Counselor Magnusson.
The only meeting I had was municipal planning commission. Just a couple side notes, because I live by the call, we keep an eye on it, because they've got the tresses up, it looks like that's going to be, the bill is going to be up in no time from the sound of it. And as we were talking about before on social media, there's been talk, we've been able to possibility of having chickens in town. There was a bit of discussion, so it got a little bit heated, and I just told everyone that they can bring it to submit your plans to town council and have it in by the Tuesday or Wednesday before the other meeting, and I guess we'll see if it's, they're all taken. See you for it.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to Counselor Thomas.
I had a tourism committee. It was a really short meeting, just an hour, kind of just an update on things. We didn't get an update on the bird of prey. As everybody knows, most stuff for the summer is canceled. I think last, I recall the Porch Fest is still a question mark. We didn't really get an update, but.
Unofficially, it's going to be, they found out it's going to be one of the hardest because of the singing.
Okay.
Because of the plexi glass that you'd have to put between the singers and your audience, and the fact that it's multiple locations, so it didn't sound great, but I don't want to speak for anybody that's organized. I just heard that there was some compliment, there's some complications because of singing that may happen. The province has been pretty strict about no concerts or choirs, those sort of things.
Fair enough. I also had the library meeting, as everybody probably is aware, the library is open as of today. We're going to open kind of in stages as to mostly how Connie and Dorothy, what level they're comfortable with at the time, because they're the ones that have to be there all day. We have cut back the, a lot of computer time from an hour to a half an hour. Obviously, like where there's three computers, the central one has been shut down, so there's distancing. And I think we decided on 12 people max in the library at a time, and I think they're keeping, we're keeping the visits of anybody down to a half an hour at a time. So if you need anything from the library, need to be organized, get in, get your stuff in, away you go.
Won't be a problem.
That'll be okay.
Fair enough. It just, it keeps Connie and Dorothy more comfortable, and since they have to be there, we're just kind of following what they're comfortable with, right?
Okay, any other comments or questions for Laura? Okay, thank you, moving on to Counselor Rody.
Unfortunately, it's like the elder abuse meeting and had to leave partway through, but as you guys all probably read, it was really neat, the seats were really, really well received, were really great. We both donated all kinds of purple wildflower seed packages to personal, our EAC, pardon me, and then here. There's a couple different webinars coming up, but again, that's in the game as well. Otherwise, unfortunately, I missed Trish's part, but that was it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Okay, Laura?
Are the purple flowers purple loose strife, I thought you said that? The one that's the noxious weed that's all over town?
Uh, no. They're actual flowers.
Oh, they're really pretty flowers, actually, the noxious weed ones, but.
They're just on the wheel.
Yeah. And the elder abuse with grievance, everything works really well with the information?
Yeah, just kind of with the feedback we got last year with basically kind of doing the same thing and working a lot with the businesses, and I think that really made a huge difference in terms of how successful it was, and the only feedback that we got was, could we do it longer for this year, which is, I called away.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thank you, Michelle. Moving on to Counselor Anderson.
All right, yeah, nothing?
Nothing. Okay, any questions for Laura? I don't know, nothing.
Nothing, yeah. Two times nothing is still nothing.
Okay, well, thank you. And moving on to me, I guess. We had a pool meeting, I think this was last time, we have one tomorrow. Tomorrow will be the first one that we have a walk, well, second one we'll have a walk through and then the meeting right after, but like Lyle said, things are progressing quite well. You know, there's probably a few concerns or questions about what's going on, but I think, you know, it's quite a bit of activity goes on in the facility every day. And then I have a CWA executive meeting on Friday, and again, you saw that letter got sent out from the, and we also canceled our June other meeting because we're kind of waiting for some answers back on some grants that we've applied for. So it was going to be a really light agenda, and we just felt that it's a long way for people to travel to such a light agenda, so we canceled it. But other than that, I did have a thank you that was given to my wife at the hospital by one of the staff, or by one of the people that, I guess, I'm not sure if you call them customers or clients, but I guess clients, that came to, and on a kudos to the town staff for keeping the cemetery as nice and neat, it's clean, you know, and trying to get in there and look after every rain that we've had or a little bit of moisture, and cemetery is not always the friendliest location sometimes for moisture. So they wanted kudos given to the town crew for doing such a great job of trying to keep our community. And then same thing with the community's blooms, you know, they're those ladies, more so ladies and guys, I think they're out there, you know, trudging and trying to keep the planters looking really good, you know, this year with the potential birdhouse elevator structures look really neat, and so if you get an opportunity to say thank you to the ladies, again, shouldn't say just a community bloom group, we should definitely carry it along, so. Anyway, any questions for me? Lyle?
I talked to Kim about this before, but I had a citizen ask in regards to the pool. He was saying, he was asking how much extra it costs us to have the crawl space around, but maybe.
Well, at the last meeting, you did ask that, but it was after we had the meeting, so we had a bit of a discussion on that. There's no extra cost, in fact, they were the low tender compared to any other tender. And the philosophy of this group that's building it, which is Western Rec, is that if you make that crawl space all the way around the perimeter, if they put the piping in it, then if there's any problems, you can correct it. But there is no extra cost for that. That philosophy of doing it, because that's the way they tender their projects.
And I can add to that, that the crawl space for Western Rec, that's a patented thing in which they were in, as you guys all know, we've been talking to them since the beginning of the process, because they did the whole champion, and from a development side, we strongly supported that right from the beginning, and from a maintenance side to be able to get around and look at it, so. And the fact that it came in cheaper than a full cement organite tank was just not that much of a, more of a bonus.
So theoretically, there's, and it doesn't go all the way around the perimeter, it probably goes, it's probably 90% around the perimeter. There is a chunk that has no crawl space because there is no, on the zero entrance part, there is no need for it, but just about every piece of pipe can be accessed from inside that crawl space, almost every piece. I mean, there is still some that goes down to the drains in the bottom, and there is a couple that are embedded in a concrete wall, but other than that, there is no, no. So again, it is great, and again, if you get an opportunity to go on to the town's website, they do have a camera set up, and you can go on to that to watch their progress as you're going through it. And also, not that it's to do with, but I see that the arena flooring one's got, I think, over 100 hits this last go around, so they put some pictures in there of doing some of the flooring, so. I think it's great to see that either, you know, people out there are taking an interest in what's going on that the town and rec department are doing, so I think we might see more of that as projects. Go on, that can be, so. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, thank you. We'll move on to, if somebody wished to file the verbal reports? Laura, okay, thank you. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Yeah, it is carried. Okay, moving on to administration.
As you can see, we did get a couple of things done, but of course, we're waiting on them to be returned, obviously the agreement from Orsk, and again, we won't know anything past getting the information to CMA about the tendering, so we won't know until we hear back whether we'll receive funding, so unless there's something else out there.
Well, I should say any rumors or anything?
No, I read some documentation, and it looks like they're implementing it through the, some of the existing transportation grounds and that, so. It looks like there's going to be a lot more to it than just submitting your project.
Well, they said on Friday, I think it was Thursday, that there's 200 million, 150 million is going to go to waste water and precipitation attachment to water and sewer, and then the 50 million would go to rural, small rural municipalities, so hopefully we should qualify for something.
Yeah, they, the qualifications were through the same route stream that we got coming through the lights of the airport, so there's a transportation stream in there, there's a bridges and bridges category, and then there's, sorry, I have them all off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, but it's in the transportation, it was Rick and Kagan's portfolio.
Water and sewer, water for life.
But again, you know, we do stand a still good chance of, because we do, because of the streets and.
With the dollar value, it should be appealing.
So hopefully we will qualify for something on that. And anything else on?
Short of that, that's.
These ones are dated, 2016 layer.
They will when we get an answer on it in some, like, I'll guess the best one example of that is Sheldon Walker, you guys, or Sheldon Anderson's agreement. You guys have approved an agreement, we're ready to go, he hasn't bought the equipment. He hasn't bought the equipment and hasn't come forward in the agreement, so we won't. And we discussed a couple of months ago about the map boxes. And we're just waiting, that, as we said, needs multiple year data to give you a good, accurate answer of whether they're working. And everything else, we're, we're working on.
Did you hear anything from Lions Club yet?
We did. The Lions Club have committed to the 800,000. They did ask if they can do it in increments based on not wanting to pay penalty on their GICs, which leaves me interested. So they have, I believe, they did 400, or 325,000 at the end, beginning of this week, the end of last week. And there's going to be 125 coming in before the end of the month. And then their GICs will mature at different states, ones in August, ones in September, all the way through till March. And to commit the 800,000, this is what they. So from a Lions Club perspective, they have their meeting, they allocated it. So now Elson is just working with us to do that, so.
I did ask him about, did they want to do a presentation? And they were more leaning towards at the end of the project or the grand opening at the very beginning of the project type of view. So I just said, well, you know, whatever we can do, you know. And they've had a couple other people that have, you know, made donations to the project. So it's still not like it's closed completely. I mean, if somebody wishes to donate to the Lions Club towards this project, I think they're still more than happy to receive your money, so.
Unless there's any other questions from there.
Nothing else? Any questions for Kim on? No, we'll move on to the.
Just a mid-month survey report went through. The things of note are, I spent a significant amount of time on those bylaw amendments and researching the procedural bylaw as some year where I've already got it ripped apart. And I have contacted the solicitor general's office and arranged for peace officer training. It's looking, they, they still don't have a confident answer on when it'll start, but we have our name on the waiting list for the first class that's going to come out. They're really struggling with them because they do a lot of close contact training. So how they, how they do that, they do, yeah, where they're working together. Of course, they all come there and they don't know each other, so. What that looks like, it's six weeks away from home, so they said most likely November is when one of the first courses is, so. So we've got that arranged. Again, spoke to Lions Club and we're now working with, with their treasurer to transfer funds, which is very helpful. We, Elson was in today and smiled and said that, you know, the money got forwarded. And it was kind of funny because for an invoice for just slightly more than what they had given us came in. So basically, money in, money out, kind of thing, so. And Paul didn't mention it his part, but he did at the last meeting about some cost recovery on fire calls through insurance. And they had a brief conversation about it. I did get some more information Doug was going to present tonight, but we read through the agreement. The committee's actually going to provide some feedback on it based on their, on their role as, as between the town and the county as being that, that group that looks at this stuff. The county has already adopted it. From our end, I did some research with our local insurance agents to get some answers to some questions, so I'll spend some time with that. And hopefully, that proposal will come to council in the next couple of meetings here. And we'll have a good discussion on that. Short of that, anything else that you noticed on there? I was away for the majority last week, which I don't care, so. For the record, working half days is way less productive than taking an entire day off. I don't plan on doing that again if I don't have to.
Okay, any questions for Kim on either one of those? If not, somebody wish to move those two reports. The one that you have handed, sorry. Sorry, I'm, I'm from outside, I guess. Laura moves out. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It is carried unanimously. Okay, one more motion. Michelle, thank you. Any question on Michelle's motion to adjourn? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And we are officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
I'm waiting for the day when someone said, yes, actually, it would.
And I apologize for, I didn't even know it was my phone because I got my phone shut off, so.